President.
You.
Here.
You.
Here.
And the.
Yeah. Adam is excuse, don't try this ahead of time in most of the buildings. Have a conflict with the first law someplace, right?
Yes. A.
Item C on the agenda is approve our meeting minutes from our work session on June twenty seventh, as well as our city council meeting on June twenty seventh. Can I get a motion to approve this? Second by Fisher. Griffin, any comments on this?
No, but something I read in here had the word Sloan, and I don't think there's a P on the end of it, but I can't tell you where it was.
Gotcha, it's on the agenda.
But I did see it somewhere.
Okay. On the agenda, but not last.
Oh.
Well, it seems tricky, but if nobody knows, we're just doing the same thing.
Good catch. Okay, other other comments on minutes.
I don't know if this is allowed, because technically my council comments were over, but I really do want to thank Dan in my council comments, if we can add that.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
You were saying it, right?
I was, and then I got sidetracked.
And the other comments on the minutes. Okay, please ban, please call the vote to the vote approved events.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Around, yes. Fisher.
Yes.
Griffin. Yes. Cousins.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Heel.
Yes. Motion carries, and we're down to item D, which is prearranged participation. And we have David Lutton here this evening with Tom Cobre to talk about the property on Baker Road. I'll let you introduce the your investment group and all that, so thank you for joining us.
My investment group is not here, but I see that they're zooming. So that's good.
I did, I did talk to Mr. Lutton and Mr. Cobre ahead of time and told them if they could go beyond the ten minutes, twenty minutes or thirty if they needed, if they're finding out the questions we have for them. So if anybody started looking to watch at ten, that's why I'm going to let that slow a little bit. So thanks.
And here, as Sean said, with Tom Cobre from Midwest Consulting, Midwestern Consulting. And I think most of you know Tom, he's a Dexter resident, and as I understand it, the newest member of your planning commission. He won't be on this project, but that's, that's a good fit. I'm here to talk about the two hundred and forty acre Sloan Kingsley properties. Number of aggregated parcels. Some of you, Paul Cousins, has probably been in many discussions of that property. It's been talked about as a development property for at least twenty years that I'm aware of. This is a very big topic. And tonight, we're here to talk about a couple of smaller parts of it, but they are crucial parts, I think. And certainly, the design of a residential real estate development project will require many, many, many more meetings. By the way, that is what we're here to talk about, a residential development as opposed to any commercial. Wouldn't be any commercial in what we're proposing. We have come without a plan tonight, and we really don't want to talk about the specifics yet of how the property would be developed, other than a, in a kind of a general way. Really, we have a couple of questions that we'd like to get feedback tonight or very soon on. And we'll talk more about those questions in a little bit. With apologies to you all, I'm not going to brag, and I don't mean anything I'm about to say as bragging, but I want to give you a little flavor of who I am. And in the spirit of if we do a project together, I'm trying to instill some trust for you that I'm a pretty good guy and will, and I'm trustworthy. I have been a resident of Scioto Township and the Dexter schools for the past forty one years. My wife Louise taught in the Dexter system, she's an art teacher for more than twenty years. Our two sons went K through twelve in the Dexter system. I have not been a political person in either Scioto or Dexter in that time, but I've had a few civic involvements. I was with Paul, I was on the organizing committee of the Dexter Community Fund. I was one of the initial donors to that fund. I was an advocate in front of your council two, three years ago for the Avalon Project, the Hilltop Apartments. And so Louise and I were funders of that project. We have a program in place. The plot is almost in perpetuity to support the art programs in the Dexter schools. And I've made a commitment recently to be a donor to some infrastructure projects that the superintendent is working on. So I'm part of Dexter, though I haven't been a political animal here. I started in the real estate industry in nineteen seventy four, forty eight years ago. And I moved from selling real estate to managing an office. I joined in nineteen seventy nine, I joined the Reinhardt Company in nineteen eighty seven, and took over the management of an office for them. And then in eighty seven, I became general manager of the company. In nineteen ninety three, I bought the company and I wanted for the next twenty years adding offices and a mortgage company, a number of other things to the company. We got bigger in that twenty year period. I now retired and no longer own the Reinhardt Company. I am a consultant to the Reinhardt Company. And I spend a good bit of my retired time, not only on this project, but as an investor in other residential projects around the county. So I have a good bit of real estate experience. That brings me to a statement that I'd like to make to you. And it is this, Washtenaw County home buyers face the most extremely competitive, least affordable housing market in my forty eight years in real estate. It has never been harder to buy a home than it is today. Hold on to that thought, we might come back to it. So tonight, we offer our land and our energy to a collaborative process. One of our strongest motivations is to improve the local housing market, the Washtenaw County housing market. No one project can take care of that statement I just made. There are a lot of other forces that contribute to that statement. But we think that it is the right time. We think that the Sloan Kingsley properties are the right location to help alleviate some of the problems that exist in the local housing market. Congratulations, if you all own homes, your properties are worth twenty five or thirty percent more than they were two years ago. Congratulations to you, but that's an unhealthy statistic for the market and for people trying to get into the market today. So our vision is for a high density development, offering many different housing projects within a two hundred and forty acre development. Last fall, Scioto Township completed a new master plan. It includes what they are calling a gateway district along Baker Road from the expressway to Dexter, the entry point, the southern entry point into town. And that gateway district means that Scioto Township is envisioning greater density than any of their previous master plans. This was a new and significant change in their master plan. The master plan process was difficult. It took fifteen or sixteen months longer than initially forecast to create that because of COVID, all the reasons you can think of. But it's, it's done, and it, Tom may talk a little bit about that later. It, it calls out the need for more density of development. And let me say, I keep tossing that word around, density. By itself, density contributes to more affordable housing, or a word I like these days, attainable housing. Without density, everything you build in a project is by definition more expensive. Density helps you to spread costs and reduce the price of the end product. Originally, our intent was to do the development with a private wastewater treatment plant. I think prior to the master plan changes, the last plan that we had was somewhere below three hundred units of housing. With the changes to the master plan, I believe it's strategic to look at more density, because the market is screaming for different products that currently exist in the marketplace. We were intending to do a wastewater treatment plant, but with the allowable higher densities, a better solution, we believe, is to extend the Dexter sewer system to this property. And again, this property is outside the city in Scioto Township. So this would require a four twenty five agreement, which I think any of you are familiar with. And that's a whole another process that has to be gone through to get to that kind of an agreement. Our rule would be, as a willing partner with the city, with Scioto Township, get to a plan that works for everybody. And I'll talk more about that later. We do not envision being the builder of product in the development. That would be other contractors coming in and completing, probably different contractors for different parts of the development. That's, that would be our vision. We think that this proposal, while it's a tremendous amount of work, with a thousand different details that will need to be figured out along the way, we truly think it's a win-win-win-win-win for a lot of different constituents. Certainly, if we can produce more affordable, more attainable housing for consumers. And back to that statement that I made, this is the hardest time to buy a home in Washtenaw County that I've seen in forty eight years. I have a pretty good purpose to watch the market. Certainly, I think Dexter would gain economically from this development. And I think it would become a more vibrant community, and I think your downtown business district as a whole would be strengthened by development of this parcels. Scioto would also gain economically, and that gets into the detail of a four twenty five agreement. There are economic considerations for everybody in such an agreement. That's all to be negotiated, and that's part of the work you're describing tonight. But for Scioto, there would be some economic benefit, and they would be executing their master plan that they just spent the last two or two and a half years figuring out. I believe that Dexter schools would be strengthened by this kind of development. Land preservation and recreation would also be strengthened. Dexter's made a terrific start with all these walking trails and so forth. Scioto has done a great job with land preservation. Let me just detour for a moment. For the last twenty two years, I'm one of seven members of Washtenaw County's Land Preservation Program. Since it started, it's called the NAP program, Natural Area Preservation Program. And I am an original member of the NACAC Committee, Natural Area Technical Advisory Committee. I'm the evil real estate developer member of that committee. Everybody else on the committee is either a scientist or a preservationist. They're on the good side, and I'm the one rep from the other side. Obviously, we're not doing this for fun. We would also expect that the developer would benefit. So the crafting of a plan that results in a win-win-win-win-win situation is, is why we're here. And the two questions that we'd like an answer tonight, or as soon as possible, is this a desirable project in the Dexter Council's estimation to embark on? Is this something we should start and work toward? And are you willing, question number two, are you willing to work collaboratively with a developer, with Scioto, to figure out all the things that are going to need to be figured out? We certainly will be ready to bring proposed plans to planning commissions or joint planning commission, however it gets organized. There's a lot to organize here. But first, we need, we've come to you first. We've had discussions over the last two or three years with Scioto. They were the first to suggest the possibility of the four twenty five agreement. That was quite a while ago, months, months ago now. We're, we're starting with you. You control the sewer system, that is at the heart of what we're asking. There is, there are a lot of different process pathways I expect can be taken. There's tremendous complexity of the tasks involved. Two municipalities with different outlooks on the world, perhaps. We have all the challenging circumstances that exist in the world right now. Somebody said to me yesterday, the economy's not broken, the world is broken. That's a little extreme, but COVID, supply chain, inflation, the coming recession that everyone's now all talking, talking about. It is a very complex world, or I didn't even mention elections. I think despite all of those potential negative forces, this is an opportunity to come together, collaborate, and make a plan, even though conditions may not be ideal. It'll take time to create the plan. And so I'm hoping that you view this as a logical and a strategic development, and one that would be a positive for the greater Dexter community, and that you'll join us in a collaborative effort. With that, I'm open to questions, ideas, comments from my engineer. Questions about anything that's popped up on the board.
Does anybody on council have a thought or?
I don't understand, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, Josh, I do notice some new faces on councils since we've been before. If you go a slide or two further to kind of show where the properties are, I'll write those as well. So that's the two hundred and thirty seven, somehow acres that we're talking about, south of the industrial park, south of the residential single family. And it does cross Baker Road next to the side of the center area. So those are the parcels of the park. I know somebody who weren't on council before, and I just want to make sure that they're back to me this semester. So along the major north property lines, we have, the same effect. The area south of the industrial park was built off of design into the industrial parks a number of years ago.
But it's the entirety of that within that green box.
Within that green box there.
Can you explain, I mean, how does this help my preservation in terms of this? Like, what would be, I mean, how much of that would be for?
Thank you. I meant to say this, a good bit of this property is woods, and within the woods are wetlands. And we have talked from the very beginning, when we started talking about developing the property, those, those woods, actually a button property, I believe that Scioto Township Preservation Program already owns. Scioto, you may know, is trying to build a corridor of properties, contiguous properties from Zee Road to Baker Road. And this would be another piece of that puzzle. They've got much of that land assembled, I haven't checked lately, but. So our intent is not to develop wooded parcels. And then on the west side of Baker Road, you're into the, you know, the creek borders and so forth. I don't know that we would be thinking about any development on the west side. Sure.
Is the plan for, when the living area in the township, is what your proposal would be much different than that?
I expect it would be much different. And let me say one word out, apartments. I believe we would build apartments into this overall neighborhood. There is a need in, in the general marketplace for that. As I looked at Dexter's master plan, I found very few apartment building locations within your master plan. I think it would be one component of a variety of housing. But we've talked about age targeted, and that can be young families, that can be workforce housing, that can be age targeted condominiums for seniors. One of the, one of the concerns that's come up in the Scioto discussions in the past was having a place where Scioto Township residents could move to affordably, and then here's one of the products that's missing from the market, and live on one level, such as we've got out here by the Judge Dexter's house and so forth. There are a whole lot of different pieces that you've talked about, but I would just make a general statement. Probably not one acre lots with two story, twenty five hundred, three thousand square foot boxes on. It would be different kinds of housing than that.
But a recent call up question, these are asking, that plan didn't show preserved areas. So is there any of those preserved areas would be the same ones more than likely?
I would say more than likely.
Then that's something, the previous plan that you shared with council, so he's just got a visual towards the whole of that.
Certainly be sending you, you know, all kinds of information, but a four twenty five agreement is complicated, has to work for all parties, and it is a way with the new Scioto Township zoning that's in place to really attack our unaffordable housing market. Can't say it much more simply than that. And affordability, size of units, it's all tied together.
For those not familiar, four twenty five agreement is friendly annexation. So it comes into the city and the township gets something at the end, usually tax money for a certain number of years, like Westbridge. It's certainly a preferred approach than just a straight up annexation, because then we get the fight. Office of Great Steel gets involved in, I guess I'll go into my little bits now. I'm very enthusiastic about this project. If done well, I see it's probably the last time that we're going to add Greenfield to the city of Dexter for a very, very long time, kind of hedged in, in places. The reason why I like the potential is it's south of town, so that means we're going to have people, but not traffic through downtown. I talked with.
No, I don't think.
Yeah, well, I don't have a problem with that either. But the schools, we know that our, our three communities that were built out starting in the late nineties are starting to age the kids out of the school systems. So the schools need, need kids. I'm very excited to hear the, the thoughts of having different types of housing markets. And my, my challenge would be, have this be something that people come to look at. Have this be something that planning and urban designers take the detour to. I've done the detour to Cherry Hill. That's, that's, has some good stuff. I think they thought they were going to have more commercial than they really needed, which is very common for new urbanism. So again, I'm very happy to hear, not a typical subdivision, fill in those, those holes that we don't have.
Sure. You were talking about Ken?
Yes. And a part of my background degree, architecture, planning, almost got urban design. Actually, I had a field trip to Washington DC area in graduate school to look at some Duane developments there and Columbia and Columbia and all of those. Say is you're going to have to make residents of Caretale happy. I suspect you're going to want to connect the roads there. We're probably going to want to connect roads there. Be mindful of how that's done, so that it's not seen as a cut through. Now, folks in Caretale will use that to cut through Baker, but they don't see that until later on when they start to do that.
It was actually a process.
That's my problem. Very excited to hear the different age groups. My grandma lived in Melvindale, Michigan, a house she bought in nineteen forty one until she died in two thousand six. And it was a mixed neighborhood, she would sit on a porch, seven year old woman with little kids going to school. I think that was great for both her and the kids. One other thing that's very exciting is the potential for multiple builders. But the regular complaints about the development is it all looks the same, even if you have different massing and the buildings flip to different sides. There's a sameness because the builder does the same things, so that will take care of part of that. Initially, one thing to be aware of is we, I'm not sure how familiar with previous backgrounds, but we did improvements to the sewer treatment plant that it's possible to add access to it. It needs, we need improvements, and at least the last council understanding was we've designed it for that, we even have a stub underneath the traffic circle to run that way, so we don't have to dig that out. But know that that's probably going to be a cost that you guys are going to do to, for those improvements in some way or another. We don't want the current residents to pay for it.
Let me say that a previous developer talked with Dexter and got a proposal back, and it wasn't economically feasible for that developer to go forward with that proposal. So again, in a collaborative effort, it has to be win-win, and we've got to figure out. Again, I view this parcel as the most logical development. And we've got to figure out, again, I view this parcel as the most logical development parcel around Dexter. It's on the main artery, it does what Mr. Michael said, it doesn't bring everybody through downtown. But the proximity is great, schools, it all fits together as a puzzle. And everybody has to be able to afford the plan. And again, we would intend to be at the table and negotiating with the parties as this goes along. Because if you create something that a developer can't fill, that doesn't work either.
And in large, that's because the product was slant density for that. Largest is the project was acre lots.
Yeah.
And you have to run the same amount of pipes if quarter versus acre.
Again, that's where density is spreading costs.
A couple of things I will say is a couple of other things, I guess I should say, is I would be very mindful about how people can get in to town and to the schools without having to do the car. That's very far away from SIO Township, in other words, you got halfway along Baker. And I hear from folks in Dexter Crossing, I hear on farms that the connection downtown is real important, not as robust as they would like it to be. I would like to see some consideration for some sort of civic use out there, park, soccer fields, whatever that isn't currently present. So having some public preserve space that's not just wetland and forests. I'd also love to see alleys with accessory gardens on the grounds. That's it. Thank you.
That's a whole other discussion, alleys and accessory dwellings. We have not been able to wait for that at this point. But again, what we're trying to get going is a meaningful discussion with all the players. This isn't going to happen because I wanted to. SIO Dexter, everybody has to get on board and make it work.
So when Mr. Levin asked for a meeting in April. Justin, Michelle and I sat right here with you and your partner was on the Zoom meeting, I think I remember right. And I made a point of contacting the SIO Township supervisor just to say we were aware that Phil Levin's interested in talking to us. And SIO, SIO according to the supervisor is interested in having a conversation. So I think the goal for me of this meeting tonight was to put this out in front of everybody. Let everybody hear the story, the idea that he's got. We don't have to make a decision tonight. But I'd like to at least courtesy of Mr. Levin, ask everyone to think about, do we want to participate in a conversation? And we could set that up in multiple ways, we could have a subset of council. Could be really complicated to try and get everybody on SIO, everybody on Dexter to do it. Or if we want to have representatives talk a little bit about, you know, where this might go. Or if we're not interested in it, that's okay too. But he's asking for, you know, an opportunity to continue the conversation. I think I saw on the first page, the word conversation, right? And that's what today was about, was having a conversation. And the question is, are you interested in having more conversations? Does more conversations don't necessarily mean that there's a terrific anything? It's, it's. Do we all feel like we're getting closer to understanding what the win-win-win-win-win might be? And you touched on, Zach, you threw out a whole bunch of ideas. Who asked the question about the preservation? That's obviously important to, you know, I don't know what that 425 would look like any better than anybody else. Zach gave a little insight into it. You know, the one we have in Webster Township provides a little bit of tax revenue back to Webster Township for a period, you know, after we became a city, which we're doing right now. Small amount. But. Yeah, I think what I'd like to do is I could put it on the agenda, or we could put it on the agenda for a future discussion, let you think a little bit about it. Can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
Could that be something we could share just so? By the way, we don't have to stop answering questions. My goal is not trying to make a decision tonight unless you, you don't have to know what you're on view of. It was not a discussion, it was more of a presentation.
I have a couple more quick.
Please, please ask some questions.
So when you talk about table housing, are you looking at that in terms of, you know, the standard definition of people earning around the area of median income would be affordable to them? And if that is what you're looking at, would there be any units available for a single person versus like a household income, which is significantly higher? Obviously, there are those standards. And then my other question is, you mentioned apartments, and would all those be ownership-based or would you have any rental units in this development?
I was intending that these would be rental units. Rental units would be a portion of the overall development. Not a majority perhaps, but there'd be a significant component of rental apartments. At median income, it's very difficult for a single person to buy a house.
I understand that.
These days, you need to go further out. You know, Ann Arbor is the sun, it's the center of our little universe here. And the closer you are into Ann Arbor, which Dexter is pretty close, the higher the prices are. And that's a wonderful thing when prices are going up, but it's, it's hard to find if you haven't acquired a property yet.
I guess my question is based around the bigger question, I think. Would there be room for, say, people just starting out in their career, single people, who want to live in this community? Would there be like a one-bedroom rental unit that would be in the price range for a single person at the median income?
We have not done anything on the design front yet. But my desire would be that, yes, there would be an apartment for a single individual. There are a lot of these kinds of questions. You mentioned your mother in Melvindale. How would senior citizens on fixed incomes get to the right living space for them? We want to have some of those spaces in this project. We think there's tremendous demand. If you look at the demographics, there are two things working. We, baby boomers used to be the biggest generation. And there's a whole lot of baby boomers who have not made their living life housing decisions yet. They need to make changes and get out of their two-story homes and so forth. I'm one of the older baby boomers, I'm two years from the top of that generation. There's 15 or 18 years behind me still coming. And so that's one demographic force. Second one is the new biggest generation in history, the millennials. And the millennials have had a very tough deal. They, some of them, the oldest millennials came of age in the Great Recession. They have seen all kinds of changes and all kinds of economic challenges. They have, many of them postponed things like marriage and kids and so forth. And now it's gaining momentum. And there is going to be tremendous housing demand from the millennial generation. So we've got these two huge groups. And we live in a very attractive area with lots of nice amenities. Lots of people are going to want to be here. We've got to figure out a logical, rational solution to all of that demand that's coming in the housing market.
So let me just make sure I understand one back to you. You can't do your own treatment plan, right? You, you, you asked the question and can't do your own, is that true?
Well, we're not sure. But we have abandoned, as the SIO master plan became reality. We've stopped drilling, looking for sand and suitable soil conditions. You know, we can't put wastewater treatment into Mill Creek. The Huron River is at capacity for phosphate, so that's not a possibility. So we would need several acres of this land as the final resting place for the finished product out of a wastewater treatment plant. We have suspended that activity. And while this has all been going on for us, the housing market has simply become more and more extreme. I can tell you stories that would curl your hair about people trying to buy houses and losing five, 10 times before they get the product or giving up and rented or giving up and leaving the area or someplace more affordable. We are a stress system in Washoe County. Ann Arbor is the worst, but Dexter and Celine are right there within Ann Arbor in terms of the stresses that are in the markets.
So one of the other infrastructure-related questions I have or have thought about a little bit is to the sanitary sewer that was served, ultimately run down Baker Road most likely, right? The last time the city had a 425 on SIO, we ran a sewer line down the county right of ways, which is Dexter Chelsea. And it was considerable as I was around for this. Yes, push on. But I understand that there was considerable challenges in getting that one permitted and then that involved a lot of easement documents with many, many landlords. And I don't know anything about the right of way of Baker. Zach is correct, we did put a small stub across our portion of the intersection of Baker and Danahoy. But it's by no means through that corridor or through the second round of out or, or even south. And, you know, when you go back to that picture. One of the things that could get sticky here is if it's running across a lot of people's property, they're going to want the potential to be able to hook up as part of the easement negotiation, which is what happened out on Dexter Chelsea Road. And that line that you're showing is what could be coming in, although it's continuous to Dexter Crossing on the northeast side of it. I mean, it ultimately begs the question, should the buying be everything on the east side of Baker Road all the way up to the village or the city? If you're going to do that, just because of the whole these negotiations classes is going to make that very difficult. Depending on where the county wants you to put the sanitary, so it would allow the sanitary sewer to be put.
Yeah, understood. To answer, I'm going to back up a little bit and talk about the wastewater treatment plant. We experienced some of those same challenges with wastewater treatment plant over by Mill Creek. And how the road commission wanted us to cross Baker Road. And we came to a conclusion on that it would be basically a speed pipe. They want to be able to go in there and take care of it if there's maintenance from each end of it now. And there was a lot of conversations about what would you get? They all agreed that it would be a licensing agreement. We need a licensing agreement with basically a protective sanitary line that runs across the road.
Dexter Crossing.
Right. So I understand that there could be challenges with that. We, we think there's an opportunity to serve the site from a number of different locations, right? Sanitary sewers like tree branches serving property, right, versus water mains. So we think there's an opportunity to connect to multiple points. There may be the opportunity, maybe we do something with a lift station and it's, you know, low pressure line kind of thing. The details I don't know yet based on what the overall project is. I would also say that if you were looking for some guidance on this with regard to the SIO master plan, if you go through their gateway corridor, it specifically says extension of existing municipal infrastructure is preferred. So that's one of the other reasons why we're here having this conversation is because the master plan says that it would, it's a preference. We've run into this in other communities, you just do an online search and look at Celine and Celine Township, they had a project on the west side of town. They wanted a wastewater treatment plant, Celine wasn't happy with that because it became the gateway to their community, it was a wastewater treatment, right? So what we started looking at with this project is, you know, there are these opportunities. The master plan was revised, modified and updated, and it created this opportunity that we all kind of worked around. So we need to explore that option again because we don't want to get into the same situation we've seen in other communities. And it's the preference of the SIO Township to do so, to enable the gateway overlay that they talk about. If you are looking in that gateway overlay, it also does talk about things like how they would process a project. You know, getting into details like it would be, they considered a joint planning commission. If you look at what other things that they wanted to achieve with that gateway are all things we've been talking about here. And that Mr. Levin has spoke about preservation, connection to infrastructure. So there's a lot of reasons why we think that asking these questions and having these conversations are important.
And we know it's not a one conversation deal, right? Be ready to come back and talk whenever you like. But to your comments, Mr. Mayor. It would be terrific if council could come with some kind of a decision. And if it's a positive one to go forward, we get SIO and we start figuring out what the process is going to be. We know we're signing up for a lengthy effort here. We'd love to do it again. We think it's logical, we think it's time. The 2023 recession that the pundits are talking about. We won't be ready to start this project in 2023, we'll be on the other side. So. I think I've said enough. Thank you for your questions, your interest.
We will get it on the future agenda to figure out what's on. So thank you very much. We'll let you know when that is.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your time. Not bad. Okay, we are down to, thank you for the public to join us for this for that. We're down to item E, which is approved on the agenda. And whoever makes the motion, we need to add an item, which staff is requesting that we add an item for an industrial facilities tax exemption application at setting a public hearing. For the Monday, August 8th meeting, so it's not any act of the setting of a hearing.
You are in a new business?
That would be, it would be a future, yeah, yeah, you would have that new business item. I guess it'd be the last one, we would have to.
10?
10, yes.
I'm in for motion. Oh.
Yeah, we would add to the agenda, we'd do this item 10, to set a public hearing on industrial facilities tax exemption for Riley Diane Stanton. I don't have the name of the person, but Riley Diane Stanton.
Excuse me, and the date?
At the August.
August.
Eighteen.
I've got it down in the wake-up motion. Go through with the addition of item 10, new business, item two, public hearing for Riley Diane.
Thank you, Miss Fisher, is there one to the latter second?
I'm sorry.
Second question out, thank you. Okay, any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, Mr. Kim, you called to approve the agenda, the addition of item M10.
Fisher? Yes. Griffin? Yes. Cousins?
Yes.
Hopper? Yes. Armah? Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
You?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. It's two of the agenda, item F is declaration of cap foots of interest. Do we have any declarations this evening? We have no public hearings scheduled for this evening, so we'll move to item H. Which is not arranged participation. Is there anyone, well, I'll start with the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a not arranged? Seeing none, we'll move to the online folks. Todd, Terry Levin, I know Grace's staff, morning staff. Todd and Jerry, could you raise your hand if you wish to speak under not arranged, please? That's helping, I can't see the full screen.
I know, I noticed some of the words.
Okay. I know Todd is interested in the item on the Park ADA. I know that Todd Austin is interested in item M8, our discussion on the Parks ADA value evaluation. All right, so no, not not arranged at this point. So we're down to communications, we have our meeting calendar in the back on being allowed in the back. And then you can come to the meeting. And then you can come tell me.
I read that more stuff than before. I would stick to it would be an agenda item, but I'm happy to do it anyway, if you'd like to talk about it in the next session, I'm happy to do that. You try to help?
I don't know strongly either way, I mean, I guess I don't know if we're like just getting down to the narrow end.
How much?
It depends on us.
How busy is it in the next?
The next one, I can really get this as bad as this one last week, but a- 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 as of right now.
Do I do a six o'clock session, seven o'clock, six o'clock session? Just keep it on, let's do, let's put a plan for six o'clock. Okay, our first report tonight is from our public services superintendent, his very own first meeting.
Thanks, you doing, how are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Do you need shit?
What? They were a long time ago when they first stood on here, I'm going to be used to it, which is good thing. So obviously it's two weeks in front of you guys, if you guys have any questions or can answer those and a couple things to say afterwards.
I have just a couple things, can we touch on the logs under the, under the rock and spool thing?
I would give, you know what, I'll talk to Kurt about that, I know what you talked about.
Just looking for an update. I noticed on the serpentine path down in Mill Creek from up top.
Okay.
There's some trees that are very low branches that are.
Need to be trimmed off.
Yeah, unless you're a small kid, you're going to hit your head.
And did you, did you, did you already talk to Kurt about that?
Okay, okay. And then I think the mowing that we've done along the new pathway has helped significantly compared to last year. I think there's a couple of pinch points to, a couple of shedding strikes might be good, but by and hard, I like what we've done from this year versus last year to help, it still keeps the flowers there, but they're away and can, it's amazing the growth and it's really hard to see around the corner, anybody coming out quite fast is going to be on you quickly on those, you know, larger turns we have. So, and then you can do to keep that as wide as possible.
I don't know.
And then for the logs, we, we didn't get a proposal, I didn't get, get Dirk to go ahead to.
Oh, good.
Dex, that was with Bright Services.
Yeah, I just said, no, I knew that, but I wasn't sure exactly when you, at the end, you're scheduled.
Okay, if you guys are still going, okay, good.
Yes, great, great.
It's just building up, it's really, it's going to be a wall here. Those are my other questions. Other questions?
I don't need the explanation of this right now, it just reminded me that there's still so much I don't know about what goes on with wastewater treatment plant, I never did do this more with Dan, so we set something up so that I don't wonder why we're borrowing four hundred pounds of something for flipping and returning four hundred pounds, I assume.
So we took the digester out to get it cleaned and during that process, it lowers the temperature in there and by doing that it can become acidic once we push the stuff back into a restricted, we try and keep it, it's basically an upset stomach like we talked about before and that's the tons of the upset stomach. Takes that acetylene and he tries to make everything even keel and stuff like that so we can start producing methane again.
Except it's reusable tons.
I'm sorry?
It's reusable tons.
Yeah, in a way, but no, as far as, you know, like I said, that's why I, I had it on here and everything to, you know, talk about that. But anybody that wants a tour, Jamie took a tour with us, Josh did too, anybody that wants to come and take a tour with us.
And that really just, I'm a visual learner and it just tracks home to me that I don't really know what the heck you guys are doing in there.
I'll tell you right now, so when I started here, I had always done water and DPW type stuff and then wastewater was always fixing things, that's how it was. I never did that last bit of the treatment. Once I got into it, once you learned it, it's basically like a stomach and I know it sounds silly, but that's what it is. You know, you're just taking things and moving things around, digesting things, eating things and then it comes out the end. I mean, I hate to put it that way. Believe me, but yeah, a lot of regulations with that coming. Yeah. So what it goes into that river has to be, yeah, so there's so many regulations on that.
I'll go one past you, so think of that as a people transplant.
No.
It's a real thing.
I know.
This came to mind based on item of the agenda later on. Don't need an answer now, but it'd be interesting to hear, I know we've tried to think on more things that we can do as a staff, if it would be feasible ever and what it would look like for us to be able to do practicing on our own or if that's something that we would never, ever want to do. Again, don't need an answer now.
Well, I can tell you my personal experience, years ago, when I first started doing this, so I had the big idea of giving Milford and getting, you know, both people got in, our both municipalities got together and bought their own crack machine. It was nightmare for both, for both and that, because then eventually I worked for Milford and found that out too later on, but it was just, it was such, because it takes away so many people just to do what we, what has to be done. I mean, you're talking, these guys, I'm sorry.
He said, and then razor gets cold.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and we, and we renewed, you know, we just got basically a one day crash course, it's like, here you go and it didn't turn out well, but the reason was is we didn't have, I mean, K and B will come on here and they'll have, I'm not lying to you, they'll have upwards of ten, ten or people out here, you know, with people going ahead of, you know, the practice improvement and stuff like that. And I mean, it's.
So it's mostly people?
I'd say, yeah, it's a lot of people.
Well, so now I'm thinking we may have a lot more people coming in, certainly maybe more DPW people if that's something.
Yeah, I can agree, Justin and I talked about that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for Tim?
Okay, so you're quick, well, quick things now, they're going to try to get that done that with the AD ramp in the sidewalk report or the sidewalk project we get going on. Third and Broad started the other day, obviously, we can tell, so we're moving quickly through it, hopefully we can start some improvements probably at the end of the week, depending on whether, I mean, Second Street, Punch List we're going through and hoping that, so I mean, it looks good for the most part, I know there's some areas we're going to take a look at that we'll go through with the punch list and make sure it gets taken care of. But besides that, it turned out that a very good project, I thought. So I'm, I'm real stoked, but I think it looks great and they use that guy that's on.
It'll be real nice when grass grows in.
Yeah, get rid of those weeds in the front, yeah, we'll get there.
And then we'll also be planting trees long time.
Good.
And updates for us?
Nope, I was, I was, I'm told a little bit about, you know, Broad Street, what's going on with the digester, as I said, so, like I told you guys, anytime you want, we'll be guys tour, and I got somebody to talk your ear off and let you know every little aspect of that. What's that? I'm not saying anything, Jamie dealt with it, so she knows, so very thorough, very good, so.
And actually, I had a meeting with NHS students from the high school and let them know that maybe one thing to talk about over this next year is getting more outreach into the schools, letting them know, hey, our wastewater treatment plant is open for tours for the different science classes and if there's any interest, trying to get that work out, so I don't know how many of those science teachers know that, all that news, make a call and schedule a tour for them.
Excellent.
I think that was a, hoping invitation to bond here to, she needs to find something that you don't understand, what we spend an hour, dollar, bucks, actually no sense. You asked a question, can I go down? The order, we just want to see.
Well, I love science, I basically breakfast. Maybe we can go together.
Let us know.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, thanks.
Good, that stuff is our community development manager, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I was counsel this evening.
Good.
Well, at least one of you are good.
I was answering on all of you.
All right, so just because I have my computer doesn't mean that I've gone to the digital age, I just got to print things off in the heat of the moment. So you have my report in front of you and my apologies that it had to be a supplement, but before I go into any other updates, do you have any questions for me?
Importance enforcement at thirty seventy-five Baker or depth enforcement, do you have any update on that? It seemed like maybe there was one, those violations ended, you were going to huddle up and later do or check in and late June.
Yeah, I was actually out there today and I talked to the project superintendent and I told, at first I asked him if he had communicated with the property owner and knew that there had been any enforcement with it. He did, he just didn't know all the details, but he did start to clean up some of the site and it was apparent, it is not totally cleaned up and I'm, I'm hoping that I needed to have more substantial mitigation by the end of the week or I would have to issue a ticket. And he's very clear, the construction equipment ladders, things that you use to build the house have to be stored either in the trailer or in the building. As far as the construction materials that they're using still, like the siding that they're putting on the house, it's fine to keep those out, but keep them in a centralized location and keep them covered and make sure that you maintain the darts. As this pertains to the construction materials that they no longer need, like you see a lot of plywood or you see shingles, he needs to get that out of there. I did ask about the two pieces of equipment, there's a fuel tank and a very large generator sitting in the back of the site. And I asked him if those are still being used, because if they're not, we need to get them out of here. Because the weeds have grown up around, made me ask the question, are they even being used? So the generator has the potential to be used even though it's not been, and the fuel tank, he actually does still use for the things like concrete and I can't remember what the other thing was. So I told him, you've got to get this site cleaned up as far as vegetation, you can keep those two things on site, but if you're not maintaining around it, it will seem horrible. I will be following up with the property owner regarding the landscaping and the fencing because she still has not had somebody, she's apparently having trouble with the contractor she's hired and paid for, he is not coming out, so I understand that, but they got into a meeting to address that, so I'm hoping that they're, they're working or, and we'll see.
So Jamie, I'm, just to follow up on that, there's been a resident on Third and Indian is been asking about the property next to the, across the alley for the external, and they have a lawn, they're not moving grass in quite the time also. And on last Thursday, I got an email from the neighbor that was concerned about the grass and basically he, you know, he said, the process is taking way too long, nothing's been cut in the back, I'm going to stop maintaining the area outside the street by the ditch, you know. And I, and he, he suggested in the email that the person that owned the property had a prominent business interest, a prominent community member, that caught my interest that I never went to look at the local property, so I asked Michelle to help me figure out what it was, but the person that I know or I know. And anyway, I called her, said, are you aware that the property hasn't been cut in a long time? And she's, well, my husband handles that. And I said, well, I don't know your husband, can you ask your husband why the grass hasn't been cut? And anyway, two days later, they cut it. Now, they only cut the back, they didn't cut the front and the front is equally horrible, well, not, probably not as bad, but anyway, there's a game going on here with some of this, but I don't share that. I'm happy that she got some action done and the property owner was happy because they backed up to that portion of the lot and it hadn't been cut forever, so he's moderately satisfied, but the, it's a rental property and, you know, in general, it doesn't look pretty. And what I'm learning about all this is that we need a quicker way to get from, from the point of identifying the problem to getting the grass cut. And, you know, there's a couple of ways we could, we could do this, it depends on how aggressive we want to be as a council, as a community in this. You know, one, one idea could be that the day that you are, instead of noticing that you have ten days to fix it, you know, we could change your ordinance to write a ticket on day one and then if they, they get the ticket, then if they cut it, they come and get the ticket dismissed. And that'd get their attention right away, right? Okay, now that's, I don't know if anybody wants to go that extreme. The other could be that we, we say that we're supposed to notice on your door and on eight days later, we're going to come and mow it ourselves and we'll charge in, but you have to write the ordinance, you have to write the ordinance to do that and you have to, if you don't get on board, that's what we want to do. There are more aggressive ways to get to the end, but I think the first time this person on this contacted, at least me or contacted staff about it, you know, we've gone through the ten, the first ten day cycle and then the reinspection, the second day cycle, and I think Michelle told me that we've issued a ticket, which somehow has crossed in the path of my communication with the person and their partial cutting of the lawn, but it's, the problem's still not averted and it's taken a whole long time to get there. So my, my conclusion is we need to find something that has a quicker to the end part. I don't know what it is or what the council's power for that is, but I think we need to be a little less lenient because the property has the people that live next to the homes that aren't cutting the grass are not patient with it. But I think the same, the same could apply to the, the one on Baker that I'm providing, and if we had a quicker thing, you know, we could go clean up what we think needs to be cleaned up and charging for it, but.
We can, but we still need a court judgment to do that.
Yeah, but you have to work your ordinance to allow that, right?
Or something like snow removal or maybe a mountain beam, you know what I mean? Like then there's.
All right.
Grass doesn't cut itself, right? Right, but with snow removal, somebody could practically never be punished for not clearing the sidewalks, it's maybe months, and that's, well, again, and then melt it in a day.
Well, the reason, the, the, the reason I'm saying that is, the reason I'm saying that is that I think our, the way our ordinance reads with a very patient process is a reflection of the power of council of the time when it was last modified to that point. So, you know, to the extent that we're either spoiling education, we keep it the same, but if we're, if we're not willing to be major or want to have more quicker impact on something or a complaint and then like that, I think there'll be a process that they support how to get there.
And, and sorry, and, and this is, it is all part of the discussion.
Yeah, down the road.
Down the road.
It's actually on the night.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just wondered about that.
Sorry.
Did you all have any questions about the, the Kids Land Montessori, which the planning commission has recommended approval?
Where is it? Kids Land would be. Was it Jake inside?
And no, 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 it was Jake inside, it would, that would be easy.
Well, I have a middle school community appropriate or something.
It's, it's on, it's Baker, you know where the kind of tractor office was?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the, well, it's now a green one.
Yeah.
So that's the one that they're, they're going to.
There's some as well, I think you showed the bit. Yeah, got it.
On the east side of the road?
On the east side of the road, yes, yes. So if you don't have any questions, I'm anticipating they'll have some additional materials that we'll be reviewing and then preparing our reports for your next meeting.
Okay.
Write the name on that, because in the, in an effort to make arts discussion more efficient about it, if when you're going through that, I would highly recommend watching the planning mission about the parking and the traffic flow, we have many extensive discussions on it, so that may help answer any questions that you might have before we talk about it as a body.
It was the primary concern.
Yes.
It seems like there are a lot of things missing from the site plan, are you going to have to clean that up before they come to us?
The, the number is larger than normal, but those are, they're all very minor and so I'm not uncomfortable bringing it in front of you. The things that we need them to look at were the primary concerns, the parking on site, who's going to be parking, how many spaces would there be, what's the staffing and the queue, because we can't have, we can't have it Chick-fil-A out on the Baker Road, it ju, it just can't happen. So hence the capping of the number of children, off-site parking that's going to be. So hence the capping of the number of children, off-site parking that's going to be staffed, things like that.
And the requirement that they have a traffic engineer.
Right.
Give them an assessment of what the best practices would say in the use.
And one of the things planning commission didn't mention, but that I'm following up with their engineers, put turning radiuses on the plan so that if somebody's coming in on the south entrance isn't going to be doing the drop off that wants to park, but there is no parking available, is there space? I can measure it. It looks like there should be, but put the, put the turning radiuses on. That would give the demonstration to make, I feel, to make council feel more comfortable.
Other questions?
I have one update. There are no other questions. I received a very nice email from Dan Kaling. He's the gentleman that lives on Hudson Street. Hudson and Forest, like. Forest and Hudson. He's the coroner. He was the newer, he was the newest house in the city prior to the one that's being built on Third and Hudson. He's the gentleman that came in initially about the sidewalk. Should he put a sidewalk there or not?
Yeah.
And that predates some of it. He needed a tree removed that's in the right of a, right of way. Staff went ahead and scheduled that with DPW and then got the new trees, the replacement trees planted. And he sent a really nice email complimenting us on getting it done. It was all cleaned up and removed and then the trees planted. And he's just very happy with it and he wanted us to know that. So I made sure that I passed that email on to Kurt and DPW. It's, it's, I know that 99% of the time we make people happy. There's a small percentage that no matter what we do, and we do make mistakes sometimes, we're not going to make people happy. But it's always nice to get something like this, so.
Yeah, that's great.
And I don't have any.
Good to share.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't share. I'm in the three boards of commissions and somebody's got something. Little 10 by first game with how much. I'll try to get the agenda from them and put them back into the top of the top.
Just a couple of things. Once we have got the internal posting for the DPW, I don't expect we're going to get any internal applicants, but at the end of next week, beginning of the following week, we will post that publicly. We, the DPW and Waterways Center, I believe are planning a retirement party for Dan. On September 17th.
Oh, that's ago, yes.
Yes. And that was at Legion. I don't remember the times off hand.
Did they send an invitation though, they're, okay, so. Allison's, that one is Allison's doing more. Okay, I myself a little bit with her, but. But that's the.
Yeah, if we, if any of us would like to contribute, is there a central person to vote for?
At the nearest one, no. No, I, no, we're doing something else with just the city employees and we're going to get it. But that September 17th, he really wanted to have it too. You know, with everybody that he's worked with over the years.
Okay.
Not worked with, I mean, I'm talking, I say worked with, I mean, council.
Well, not just, it's individuals.
Yes, if you, if you wanted to give you his wife's number, she's glad.
Sorry. No, no, you're good. I appreciate that. And then I'm planning a vacation for myself next week.
Well, bye.
Thank you. But I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. I believe pretty much everybody else in the office is going to be around next week, so. But as always, if you need any emergency, if you need anything, but give me a call myself. And I'll be checking our email periodically. We are working to get the newsletter out next week. This is my goal is to have it in, you know, lots this next week. But once we have a final, final draft, I'm sure council. So if you have any questions for me.
I just would like to note that the MERS information, 94% funded ratio is I think the highest number I've seen since I've been a part of this council. So good work to all of you and you and everyone. To get that up there, that's really incredible for the 59 or 61 or whoever was.
Yeah, but that, that number is through December 31 of 2021. So some things have changed in the last six months, but it is still, it is still nice, nice to see that, even if it is temporary.
Shows me at the top and everybody else.
Any other questions for Justin? Okay. Drop down to my report. I did finish up the draft of my state of the city. It's moved that to Justin. Could you go ahead here? Last, the last week someone there? So. That's not holding up, showing her. I would like to note that obviously Chief Smith retired and there was a small, good together home until I first, which I was out of town. I just want to publicly state that we all have hard work in thanks to him for how he's helped the department move forward. I didn't always agree with him on everything. But that's just, that's like, he had a, he had a big heart and he cared a lot about this community and, and firefighters. And he was hard on them. He brought some new ideas and change is always tough. But it was generally changed for better and anyway, I just wanted to recognize within my report, I just want to publicly state that. Well, and thanks for helping move the department forward, so. You have any questions for me on everything?
I guess I do. In tonight's presentation, Mr. London's here, he's a property owner. And he's here facilitating maybe a 425, which means extra city on Syo Township. Where's Syo Township in all of this? Because he keeps talking about, we do this. And at first I thought, well, he's teamed up with Syo and he represents more Syo and now, and he's approaching us for us to try to get into some kind of negotiation. And I couldn't, he said, I couldn't figure it out.
Donna, I think that he has spent the last, like you said, two and a half, three years, two years, whoever it's been. I think he spent the last period of time trying to understand what Syo would allow them to do.
Okay.
Okay, I think that, and I asked him about the waste water treatment plant. I think that the decision that EVO made to not allow any additional phosphorus on here on River Hill Creek essentially killed any hope he has.
Okay.
Okay, what he's talking about drilling and finding sand is a, is a discharge into the ground as opposed to discharge to a surface water. Not an easy thing to do. Okay, not an easy thing to do. I think he realizes that to achieve the density of his vision, he needs our help. Okay, and you know, I don't know, dead density is a tough word. It's like apartments is a tough, a tough word. You get the wrong, you get the wrong person with it and it's, you know, rubs the wrong layer right away now. I think it, I think it's probably worth exploring. And what I was going to do after this meeting is just give Syo Township supervisor a call and say, hey, we had the presentation. All seven numbers, our council heard it, development manager heard it the second time, our engineer, folks services superintendent, city manager, you know, all heard the same thing and, and I, I, I think that there should be probably initial conversation. In two weeks when we talk about it, I would say that I think we should have a conversation. I think we owe it to all the entities that are talked about and respectful of our neighbor Syo to at least sit down and have a conversation. Now, if, if we're all adamant against it, then, then we should just say no. That, that's an okay answer to it. Saves them time. They at least knows where we're at, okay? But I think there's enough potential positives to evaluate. I, I.
Do you ever get from, is there anybody who has determined or is there anybody to ask what kind of sewer capacity are they going to expand our place? What does that mean? I mean, he's talked about various items about where different kinds of things and hookups would be and how much of that would be those hookups.
Donna, this is where, this is where the devil's in the details and it doesn't make any, it doesn't help anyone to try and tie an opinion to a number. Okay, and it doesn't, doesn't do them any good to put a number of homes out there. Doesn't do me any good to say we can handle this many homes, even if I know the answer, okay? Because then it's all, all of a sudden it's framed to a number and a tie, right?
Right, but I was talking about in terms of expansion. Do you have any idea how much we want to expand?
Well, I'm always, always in your twenties. The 20 years I've, 20 years I've been here, I have believed that redevelopment within our boundary is where we should start as a community. There's plenty, there's still plenty of opportunities here and we're doing that well. I mean, we're doing that very well, I think we are. And it's, it's happened over a long period of time. I mean, the newer subdivisions are just the beginning. But when you look at here on View Condos and Eaton Court and you know, now Hilltop View and Grand View and the potential Millennium Place. And all of those are redevelopments of properties that had either single family homes or one other user industrial case. Those redevelopment opportunities are creating density in our town. It's vibrant. You've opened drives at all on Saturday or Sunday to go through town. There's people here. I, I, I spent the night on Saturday night, I was lucky enough to be able to go to Joel's concert.
Oh, you went with Marie?
Yeah, I go with Marie. When she was there, I didn't know and I didn't see her.
Yeah.
It was a great concert.
Yeah, we bought our tickets in 2019, hoping to see her in 2020 and been canceled for a couple of years. So thankful that he still wanted to put it on. But we stayed downtown for a night. And when I woke up on Sunday morning, I could walk straight down to Woodward and not get hit by one car at 7:30 in the morning. There were more people in Dexter.
Oh, yeah.
Walking around at 7:30, 8 o'clock, then, then there are in the city of Detroit. It's very vibrant. What we created, what, what's been developed here. But back to the thing, I think it's worth the opportunity to listen and listen to our neighbors, see what they want to do.
So a quick version, then, then we have our engineer to, to correct me if I'm wrong. But my recollection is that when we did the work on the sewer treatment plant, we designed it to take care of capacity to redevelop over our borders. We didn't size it to take a huge chunk. So that's where I pressed on, if we need to add another settling tank, another whatever, that's going to be a cost. But we did design the improvement so that there are opportunities to run the pipes and run those things and there is space for it.
And the headwork point was all for making that plant run a hundred percent better. It wasn't necessary to bring in another. Take it on more, so to speak.
That's kind of hard to remember, yeah.
So I mean, there is going to be obviously improvements. And we did look at this a couple of years ago. And it's not only with the sewer. It's, I mean, they're, they got to realize the water's going to be huge. We're not, right now, we're at the best.
Yeah, well, waters, waters might be the bigger issue, really.
And that's, I don't think.
At the end of the day.
Yeah, just wondering.
But in fairness to you, I don't think, I don't think we should talk about a number. Those details have to, have to be flushed out with the vision a little bit more and eventually those that.
I guess I wasn't able to give you an exact number, but I was thinking like, oh man, I'm going to have to expand the plan. I'm trying to weigh how this goes.
Well, I mean, at one time, this community approved Dexter Crossing, which has what? 500 homes?
And we brought you guys here on 425.
It's all 263?
Yeah.
Okay.
They say we have a.
Okay, what's your, what's your on farms?
Your on farms, I think 433.
All right, maybe that's the bigger number. I know Westridge is two something. You know, those are all palatable.
Those were all with the freaking brothers that, you know.
But when, when, when the first versions of this small Kingsville property were thrown out in 2004, when I heard about it, it was numbers that made those numbers look small.
And it was basically justice.
There were two, three times those numbers. And there was quite an upper order of that, you know, but when we had 80 units of Grand View or we had 33 at William Place, you know, smaller, it adds up, but it's more control. I don't know. Love to get into that.
Well, not complaining, just kind of trying to figure out how to think it through.
Well, if we decide to have a conversation, our, our next approach would be that with both sides. Okay, we'd like to, you know, offer three people best step to be in our original conversation. Can you bring three people in the developer and then they group it after report back to those people or something like that?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. London, though, it's clear that he knows we're trying to get some things on the ballot, make some questions. And they were working very hard on the fire station right now. And I told them that in April, we got to get our budget in place and we got to figure out our commitment to the fire station.
And the school wants money as well.
So there's, there's some things ahead of, of that, I guess.
Yeah.
My.
Yeah.
Time on the. Justin, before I leave my report, can you just give us an update on progress of this building? And I know we talked a little bit about something that they want to do over here that they didn't find exactly as they found it.
So, so actually that's, that's another.
Oh, I just. Yeah. Yeah, I forgot what's on each other. All right, we got to consent agenda.
They moved, we approved the two items listed on the consent agenda. There's a total amount of $407,015.78 and a proposal from K and B Asphalt Security for a 13 crack seal program for an amount of $15,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Pam, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Griffin? Yes. Aral? Yes. Michelle? Yes. Hubbard? Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
Cousin?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Before I go down unfinished business, I skipped over council member reports. I didn't intend to. Is there any council member report that wasn't written within the months?
Looks like it's on.
Okay. Just want to make sure, okay. Okay, we have no unfinished business. M1 under new business is consideration of the 2022-23 concrete repair program. Design and construction engineering services from OHM advisors for Mount Attic C 37.
I'm making a motion.
To.
I second this.
Second my sound? Thank you.
Justin? So I see Patrick's in the audience, so help me here, but the idea is that we are budgeting for two major projects in the fiscal year. One is Dan White, the design, which I believe we just approved. Don't, that's, that's next. And then the second is the concrete repair program we talked about. And that would include looking at the, removing the stairs, the Air Force and Jeffords. Repairing the concrete sidewalk band across Ann Arbor at Edison Street. There's a ton of crumbling curb and ground farms that needs to be repaired. And then. Dan, Dan White, yeah.
Are we, are we on one?
Yeah. One and one.
Okay, but you're reading the mail or? No. Why did I think there was something else? I was going to say consent agenda. I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay.
Thank you.
And then, and then the last thing is, is just working on fixing keeping sidewalks and broken sidewalks throughout the city. Although OHM is putting us in touch with a, it's been a cutting service for sidewalks. One of the things that we talked about to potentially get the total cost down is to rather than go in and fully remove a slab and put a new slab back, is to. to rather than go in and fully remove a slab and put a new slab back is to diamond grind to to even it off. One of the issues that we are potentially running into every time we go to remove and replace a sidewalk slab is a lot of those are being caused by tree roots. And so to resolve the problem, you have to go in and cut through, potentially kill the tree. So even if we go in and diamond grind and that gives us another three, four years, if it means that it saves the tree and we don't have to spend a thousand dollars to remove the tree in addition to the sidewalk repair, then there there is a potential long term savings there. But this this was designed as kind of a hodgepodge project with a bunch of different things that that you've identified as priorities and things that that needed to be done and goals to kind of not allow.
Not every resident will like the look of that.
So just not every resident will like the look of that diamond grating.
I'm more than saying.
Just just so we prepare for that if we decide to take that approach.
So so apparently we we did have it done a few years ago by contractor that we didn't really like. Apparently, there are other contractors that could potentially do a better job.
You know, just go around town on May sixth, when you round off.
Yeah. I just want to go for the record since I brought it up a little years ago, I'm a huge fan of the grinding. Instead of drilling and lifting everything, I have a very janky set of five flags sidewalk in my house because they've drilled and lifted even though they're pulled off the list and they're not even. And they actually had to go onto my property to lift without permission the sidewalk right into our house. And there are significant portions where it's no longer bubble with the pavers and I trip on it at least once a week. So I think this approach is much better, it reduces changes. And if folks are concerned with the appearance, there are ways that you can etch and age concrete much more quickly. So you won't even know it's there.
But I I I believe Curtis is going to be meeting with a representative of what is that any company is to pick out one or two locations just to see how how it looks and see how how it functions for going further.
I'm just suggesting that there might be some. Why why did that person get replaced or is I have my ground?
Ground, yeah.
That's the that's all the question.
So it's typically the cycle, the street trees and sidewalks? I mean, is this the cycle with street trees and sidewalks? And so I'm just curious.
That's how close together there.
Right, so then why, I guess, if it's just an ongoing maintenance cost? If you kill the tree or you're up into sidewalk and obviously you it's a sidewalk or hillside, I mean, isn't it inevitable that the tree is going to damage the sidewalk?
It it depends on the species of the tree, sometimes just specifics, which I'll bring you more in this direction. There are lots of ways, and I say this currently, because I planted big trees in eighteen seventy-six, there are ways you can manage. Usually it's because people plant the wrong type of trees too close. So never, ever, ever plant a Norway cable anywhere near anything that you don't want to heat.
So are we mindful of that in our street tree planting programs?
I I I think we're a lot better at that.
We've gotten better at this.
Yes, I'm very careful with what trees in the subdivision where your tree lines may only be five. Why? Having a tree, it's not going to be minimal, it's not going to be a sidewalk. It's going to be a smaller tree, we call them roots, that's true. Some of it where the the roots are more than two, they're in the roots, but you're not going to have the roots that that are closer to the surface and and heat the sidewalks as the front.
Another idea, I think it just, if we're discussing the general, we're talking about, are we, I mean, I'm sorry if I'm missing something, but what percentage of of these sidewalks being affected are really old trees that were there before the sidewalks in the first place?
That that I couldn't tell you.
Because I feel like that's going to be a lot of them, right?
A a a lot of the heaving sidewalks are because of trees.
Right.
I couldn't tell you how many of the trees were there first before the sidewalk.
I mean, I just feel like a lot of them in the whole village were definitely there before the sidewalks.
There are, just from past programs, there are a number of these, we kind of call them toe catches in some of the results. Some of it's tree related, some of it's just settlement over time that, you know, stuff was built, maybe didn't have the best compaction and you get a couple of seasons of freeze thaw. Utility trenches are different, so when we build out a subdivision, they'll put in sand trenches next to clay and that kind of consolidates the over time. So that that's a lot of it, actually. So in those cases, you know, something like this may actually be a semi permanent fix. But but yeah, for sure, I mean, I think every community deals with the issues of the street trees and, you know, I know in front of my house and my neighbors, they've had this lab in their yard your voice three times. And the tree's been, you know, basically cut down and they're through at the time as well, so. You know, I think there's the tremendous beauty of having a tree, so I think if you do try to, you know, save them, I think you could work the shot. When they when they when they poured my driveway, they poured the driveway from the garage all the way out. And then they did the sidewalk. So there's sidewalk. I don't think it's interference of the concrete through the driveway, so there's this natural plane and I've got a little root right there or the root of the tree that and whatever, or six or.
Can we do something about the squirrel that walked through my slab? Because that's right in front of my door, I can't live in it, so please, let's talk to me.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm not saying don't do it, I think that if it's effective, the it's it's probably, if the root is going to continue to grow, eventually you're going to be replacing, you can only grind so much as it reels. I mean, it's only four inches thick. So at some point in time, you're going to gradually one of those probably going to crack and you're going to be replacing it anyway and that root's coming out of there. But if you want to give the tree a few more years.
Yeah, well, and there are other management things you can do for the tree. The the root system largely mirrors the canopy, so if you trim on an area, it will reduce the root structure and pressure for the root structure to grow on. It's a technique when folks are doing construction next to a tree, you don't want to hit roots, so you trim the tree pretty aggressively a year before the roots come back. To learn our ways to to have them exist.
Any other questions on the proposal in front of us? Okay. Pam, please call the vote to approve, sacrifice now.
Oh, sorry.
Your head.
Arab, yes. Griffin, yeah. Cousins.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Fisher, yes. Hubbard, yes. Keel.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Good project. M two, consideration of Dan Boy Road and Sidewalk Design Services. The O H M divided for a mountain that to exceed fifty-four thousand eight hundred.
So so this is the other major project, this is the year, the idea is that we would begin design, I'm sure it's quick. But we bid it out this winter with the goal of having the project start after school lets out in June of twenty twenty-three. We would be looking to address the two ends of Dan Boy that are currently the worst and then put a fog seal in there. In addition to this, we'd be looking at adding sidewalk going in front of the current local community garden location to connect the existing sidewalk to basically the the existing crossing that goes into the school property or around the cemetery.
So bring it to the last down towards.
Different.
Questions? Zach?
How much extra would it cost to do design work to bring the sidewalk all the way down?
All the way down to Dan or Baker?
Yes.
I I I think we actually, I think we have the estimated construction.
We do, yeah. So we've already done design work. No, the limited area, I mean, we know the number, I don't know.
Was there an issue on how much space it was?
Right away, my garage is right there.
Garage has gone down.
What's that?
Garage has gone down.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Just a slab down.
Okay. So I think there's still a right away issue over there if there was a separate field somewhere there, but yeah, we we have an idea, we can come back.
I I raise it because I recommend everyone do this mental exercise. Start in in Dexter Crossing and see the path to get to Alaret Stadium. It is impossible and you're never going to do it because you have to cross the road and cross the road and go back around and come back or you're walking through the street. So I glad to hear we've done this and that, I hope we push it here in the future.
Well, one of the things we did require is when MC three upgrade, we didn't require sidewalk on Dan Boy for that big section. That's what we have to, would help that problem to stay on that side all the way along now. At some point, that's what we have to learn to join.
Is there a sidewalk in front of Hilltop View? Is that in front of us putting sidewalk in front of?
It should have been.
There's already.
That's there.
That's there.
Yeah.
So this would continue from that.
Right.
They would allow them to cross the street, using the box, yeah.
Yeah, or.
Please, Sean, do you think this will include the MC three piece or less?
No, I don't think it does, I was saying, we didn't, for whatever reason, back in the day, we didn't require them to have the same thing. We missed an opportunity to have that part of the gap.
Right.
Okay, wait, we can talk to Scott.
If they want to include that?
Or at least look at what the cost would be. I think we we want to tackle at this point.
I don't know, if he's willing to work up the number.
Yeah, we could do that, and we did that for DAPCO. Right. I think DAPCO paid for it.
They did.
Yeah, we did design.
Okay, well, much needed private council. Any questions, your hands?
Do we don't want to bump this, this figure out just a little bit, how many how many looking at the initial sidewalk?
So let me aside on all the desire and in front of MC three or this one?
Well, wait, this is just design. This is just design, this is not putting it in a construction.
Exactly, yes, we're willing to pump it up.
Do you have any guess on what that would be or any sort of way?
Why don't we, so what? I'm guessing it's going to be, a construction number is going to be significant, so I feel like it's something we can come back and house with. I mean, you know, I just keep it the way it is and, you know, we have enough.
Yeah, we'll let them bring back, it'll only take minutes, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
That way you can think about it.
Yeah.
Tell us the challenges and what are they.
Sure.
Okay, Miss Pam, please call the vote to approve, motion by Fisher.
Michelle.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yes. Cousins.
Yes.
Fisher, yes. Arab, yes. Keel.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, everyone. There was a item M three, consideration of hold from Clear Go for software services for Mount Mount to exceed eighteen thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. So we'll advise that.
So this is a project we talked about during our budget work sessions. This is a software proposal that includes budget capital improvement, budgeting, transparency, budget book creation. The idea is that this software will interact with our current management software, which is D S N A. It will provide us some flexibility in forecasting and managing the creation of of our budget and make capital for the plan through the software rather than making separate Excel worksheets and all the things that go along with that. Michelle, do you have anything?
Nothing more than what's already in the memo, I cannot suggest we do such questions.
That the eighteen thousand was budgeted this year, right? It was. And that comes three years.
So so it's
Or does what's the?
It's 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 basically a three thousand dollar upfront implementation fee and then fifteen thousand per year.
The yearly cost of it, right? The yearly cost of fifteen, okay. So we're proving one year's worth of abuse. Every year we use that as company?
That's what I understand.
And then comments on Clear Go? Okay, Miss Pam, please call the vote to approve.
Fisher, yes. Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yes. Arab, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Cousins.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. I look forward to seeing examples of how we do it.
Thank you very much, I truly appreciate this tour.
You're welcome. I do this item M four, consideration of arts culture heritage committee compensation resolution.
The amount of trade for us to twenty dollars for you. One second.
Move by everyone, second motion, thank you both. Any discussion, questions? Okay, Miss Pam, Paul?
When we, we've done this, we feel like also experiences, we're down with people through all other units of government, like my, this will reasons, we this time of year.
I don't know what all the other units do, but I know that I think we felt like this was an important, I mean, that that you do it after the other ones.
Yeah, all the, pretty much all the other reports that it's are compensated. I think that, yeah. And I think, you know, from community to community, I think it varies. I think some do, so you have some only pay planning commissions, some only pay. I think it just kind of.
My my experience, all the crews I've worked in, including some consultants, they do pay some stipend to folks. How much it is varies. Some of them even pay the legislative bodies, so I think Dexter Town should be paid for that person, the local planning commissioner's E D A, and if it's cock up, we'll even pay their mileage to go there back.
Okay, any questions on the resolution? Okay, Miss Pam, please call the vote to approve the resolution.
Fisher, yes. Cousins.
Yes.
Arab, yes. Griffin, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Keel.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Our on the page four of the agenda. The business item M five, consideration of setting a polling hearing for our August eighth, twenty twenty-two council meeting regarding city council compensation. So we managed to vote to set public here.
I just want to get this business all the way to set public here for August eight.
And Zach, is there a second?
One second. If there's somebody else on the table.
Go on, Fisher, thank you. Yep. Any discussion needed to set public here?
There's any surprises, it's the same thing we talked about last meeting.
Miss Pam, please call the vote to approve.
Griffin, yes. Arab, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Cousins.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Fisher, yes. Keel.
Yes. Here is, okay, so I have that on my list. Thank you. Business item M six, consideration of resolution to submit a charter amendment available for the government. Twenty twenty two ballot regarding sale of personal property.
My opinion.
Okay, so move by Fisher, second by Griffin. So we'll keep the cap. Resolution in the language is on. One, nine, or it's five?
And so the, the proposed term of language and the ballot proposal are both, it won't, I, uh, resolution get done each way. This is the same thing we saw last time, except taking it from, from two options for term of language down to the, down to the one we discussed. That was Scott's preference, which was the excluding personal property and equipment one rather than. It sounded like council was more comfortable with this option.
And just, so I'm. So I'm not being particular, but we're not limiting it to just, you know, lawnmowers and woodshed, which is right. Doesn't need to say such as.
It's an example of this.
What's that?
It's an example of this, so it's things like these.
Okay, that's why I.
As opposed to.
As long as you're, you know, so we can put a chainsaw unless somebody doesn't say we love the chainsaws.
Right.
More than this, that it's got, understand that, right?
Yeah, well, and so, so, you know, it's, it's two is that personal property and equipment. And there's a lot that falls under personal property and equipment. Yeah.
Such as. As long as you're. Okay. Any further questions, Tom? Okay, ma'am, please call and vote to approve.
Michelle?
No.
Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Fisher? Yes. Aro? Yes. Griffin? Yeah. Heo?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, business item seven, consideration of additional capacity foundation work. A thirty five fifteen rod to Axiom construction for not exceed fifty thousand.
I'm going to approve.
We'll approve that, yeah. Is there a second?
Sure.
Yeah, so, so as you alluded to earlier, and as is noted in the memo. While they were excavating out that, at Axiom subcontractor found that part of the building's foundation isn't as deep as, as the structural engineer and our ex had thought it was going to be. And so because of that, that now that we've excavated and found this issue, we need to take care of it. And that the plan to take care of it is to underpin the foundation, which is going in and digging out and setting basically columns underneath the foundation. That would allow them to then connect the addition to the foundation as they were planning to do. And continue moving forward with, with the work. Their concern was if we don't underpin and the existing foundation starts to heat because it's above the cross line. Other issues, then it could separate from, from the addition. So.
Zach?
Have we sent someone around with a cookie stick to check other areas of the foundation to see if it goes deep? Uh, not that I'm aware of, but I think that. Their thought is that. The, wherever the crawl space is, is probably the same. Yeah, and, and it may not have been an issue until we excavate. Because I obviously it's, it's been there for quite a while and, you know, that we're aware of that there hasn't been any, any issues, but now that we have excavated it and uncovered it, yeah, we address it.
And did they closer to or any other options such as he will appear as a penny?
Uh, this was their, their suggested solution and they thought that this would be the most cost effective. And then I did, I did ask them to look at, you know, what are our options? And this was the one that they came back with, the most cost effective. But they also.
Yeah, we would pay the fifty thousand on a panel.
Correct.
Those require. Does it require a budget amount? I think it was a question.
It, so it'll be in this year, twenty two, twenty three, in Nick.
Any other questions for Zach? I'll try and do Zach.
No.
Sorry. Zach, Zach usually good at answering, so.
Yeah. You've only just tapped my three knowledge too, so. I can stay after Ben and ask you. Hit it now.
I'm pressing the vehicle files. Get into the story and everything.
Oh, it's.
Ms. Van, please call and vote to approve. Motion by Sam, second by Fisher.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin? No. Fisher? Yes. Aro? Yes. Heo?
Yes. Motion carries? Thank you. The business item M eight, this discussion of arts ADA audit slash evaluation. I was hoping Todd Austin is still. You've got one.
There he is.
Unmute.
Todd Austin is here, hi.
Being patient with us. I, was that the garden before the fourth of July? And we're talking and he, he asked for, he made a couple of good suggestions. He asked one, did we bring a picnic table over to the community garden, put it in the shade? So people can sit down for the gardening, and in this case, retire, nice shade on the left side of our, of our new garden. So thank you to DPW, I'd say thank you to Tim for you and the team to contribute to that, because that's over there now. And.
Where's Miami used to be?
It's not in the voice, no, it's not in the voice, it's right in the grass.
We, we, we turned it over, wrote it in voice Miami and then pulled it back over.
Second topic that we talked about was. How accessible some of our parks are, or gazebos are, or even the path. Todd, if you would, I'm going to let, give you a few minutes to just briefly share with council what you shared with me, because I thought it was important enough that everyone, so, the right way, so.
Uh, thanks, Sean, and thanks for putting this on the agenda. I, I should probably start off, so I don't forget, the, the memorandum that's in the packet. This states the concerning entrances to community park. The Ryan Drive entrance is actually just fine. It's the other two that come from Shaw Court and Eaton Court that are problematic. But to lay a little context here, so my family and I will live on Ryan Drive, very close to Community Park, and we use it frequently. And half a dozen years ago, I was diagnosed with muscular dystrophy. And so, you know, in the last few years, the last year or two, especially during the pandemic. I started to feel the effects of the reality of that diagnosis a little more. And it's really thrown into sharp relief some of the deficits and that we have as a community in the design of our public spaces. One of the first things I noticed was in the drawing that was put out, the proposed drawing for the new play structure. Below the library. And noticed an interesting looking space that made no accommodation for anybody who wasn't able to climb up onto the equipment. Our son has attended Honey Creek School down on Whitehead Road for the last several years, which is co-located with the High Point Agricultural School for the county for kids with severe disabilities. They've always had great play structures that are a hundred percent accessible. The play structures in community park are not accessible at all. If you're not able to climb up onto those things, you can't use them. The, the park swings, any park swing I've ever seen in our community, there isn't a single swing for a kid who might be using a wheelchair. Not a single one. We've got ones for little kids, we've got those hideous strap seats, which are also really inaccessible, I must say, as well on our swings. You really want a flat seat for that, at least some of them. The, the benches, and just to go down my list for community park, the benches that are there, that are like near the play structures are inaccessible. I don't know if they were built originally that close to the ground, but they've certainly sunk into the ground. And they're too low to be accessible and they don't have armrests on them, which they need for accessibility. So they really need to be replaced, probably on concrete paths with seating that has a back and has armrests, so that people with mobility challenges can use them as well. I can barely sit down on those things and I'm not sure if I can stand up when I do. They are not inviting in the slightest. The gazebo, so the gazebo at one end, the kind of sort of north end, northwest end, I guess I want to say, of the gazebo. Has a straight, you know, comes straight out from the pad of the gazebo, as though it would connect to, you know, a concrete run to get into it. There's no concrete run there. The fact it faces into a tree. And it's grass that is sunk probably two inches below the, the level of the gazebo floor. And it really needs to be facing a direction where concrete, guys, you know, properly sloped concrete path can come out. That meets the sidewalk there or paved path or whatever kind. As I mentioned, the entrances from Eaton Court and Shaw Court are exceedingly steep. And I have zero doubt violate the ADA specifications on how steep those such paths can be and still be accessible. They are challenging for me to climb these days, I have to say. And need to be rethought, you know, and I haven't, well, I can make one comment about Mill Creek Park, which is the lovely walkway. Has almost no place to sit down along it. The new path that we built down along Mill Creek has very few places to sit down. And the places where we have put someplace to sit down, it's a, it's a flat seating surface with no back and no armrests. Which is challenging to use. So they look real pretty. But they're not a choice that considers people who don't have full mobility. And I would imagine that, you know, our other park spaces could use. An eye across them as well as, as to how we set them up and whom we have in mind when we set those things up.
So I thought that what Todd said to me, which, well, and what we just heard today was pretty. Pretty informative and pretty compelling, kind of thought, we have everybody hearing this voice on, thank you, Todd, for attending tonight and calling us. Call out some of those needs. I think this is something we should pick about programming, I think we should, my suggestion was going to be, see if OJ. You know, would be willing to, if they, if you think they're the right choice, Justin, you know, I know that they have a good understanding of ADA compliance and accessibility. That they could look for some of the opportunities, understanding what Todd just brought on in terms of a few places, hopefully we could just put an eye on each of our parks. So I, you know, I'm not asking for approval or anything other than maybe, I'd like any state to hear that. Maybe you guys could work together, come back to us with a little proposal on how to initiate that.
Yeah.
Obviously, if it needs to go to the parks, I'm not trying to trump the parks, maybe I'll just work through it, but that was the extent of the, the message I thought was, work through it, you know, the message.
Before I broke my hip, I would not have known several of the things that Todd mentioned, but the arms and the backrest, that makes a world of difference as to what, you know, what I can do. I broke my hip, Todd, about a year ago, and the arms and the backrest are really critical to be being able to get down and get back up. So I really appreciate you coming and sharing it with us.
Well, it is, it's a long way from, you know, the new public park path that we talked about earlier. There is, there's one spot to sit down in the middle on the, it's been a bad word lock, but it's just a, just a wood bench and it doesn't have.
And there's so many thousands on it and.
It's a long way to get from there, Baker.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I thought it was, it was a good message.
Yeah, yes. James?
Yeah, I do just want to share, so this has, this topic has come up on parks, although it's definitely, you know, fine to talk about it as much as it needs to be talked about until we reach the resolution. Specifically, I just wanted to mention, Ron Miller on Parks Commission has a number of times brought up the topic of rail, adding railings to the main gazebo downtown. So I know that's the month, I know as we've talked about potential redesign of the playground at Mill Creek Park, it has gotten with an eye towards accessibility there too. But it's something that parks are thinking about, you know, those specific topics have come up, I'm sure they would welcome an audit of the all the parks facilities.
That been, personal, personal experience with ADA updates, our family enjoys using Flat River campground as sleeping gardens, the southern end of the park. We like to use the walk-in tent spaces and they have recently rebuilt their. Bathhouses, bathroom and bathhouses to remove, you know, flat top seating areas and put in benches with armrests and backs on them. And it makes them a lot easier to use, it really does. And would love to see stuff like that in our parks as well.
Zach? This is a question, since it's been a while since we touched it, our organizing resolution doesn't say that Smith Group JGRs are parks people? It, it does. Have we reached to them to see if they do odd services? Uh, this is, this is the first time we're, we're talking about it.
Yeah, sorry, I guess you got, you got two proposals maybe from, on the trust and, you know, if it's appropriate, whoever's the most appropriate. So I'd absolutely trust this judge on stuff, but.
Well, I.
It's suggesting to get the conversation started, I, I just.
And especially when it comes to things like ADA compliance or sidewalks and that sort of thing, you know, OJ is normally our, our go-to. You know, I can, I can sit down and.
I'll work through it, you'll work through it. We're good with that direction or don't we? So Todd will have this back on a future agenda as soon as they pull the proposal together and hopefully take some steps to make improvements.
Sounds great. Thank you for your time, folks. I appreciate it and your attention.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Not at all, thanks.
New business item nine is a discussion of property maintenance and rental inspections.
So we're going to start by picking up where we left off with the discussion regarding what our current ordinance has as far as public nuisance. Those would be a number of different things, overgrown lawns and natural streets are one of them. But it also includes things like inoperable or abandoned unlicensed vehicles, incomplete construction. A vacant structure that is overrun with vermin. A vacant structure that is not safe, et cetera. So what, what I've done is I've looked at our public nuisance ordinance, excuse me, and. Jamie, you were right, there is a one day note or a one-time ten-day notice proposed. I've always done to, because that's the way it's been done historically in this city. It is very rare. It is very rare, I shouldn't say that, it's unusual to have to do more than one notice on property. There are a couple of habitual offenders. Try and talk about one this morning. We've talked about a few others previously. There. Not including the one that Tron talked about. We've talked about the extended waiting circumstances as it relates to those. The good news is that, like I said, there are few and far between. But they do test the limits of patience sometimes. Or of our patients, my patients and ultimately councils and other residents. So what I did is I looked at what would be. How could we affect quicker response times, expend less staff time? And my thought is if we, if we take. The grass, the natural needs, that particular portion of an offense out of the public nuisance ordinance. I don't have to do or suggest to you as much of an amendment is if I take that out. Plug it into the vegetation section, which is Article three, section sixty. Article three, section two. I'm sorry, Article three, section sixty-two. Chapter sixty already deals with. Excuse me, already deals with vegetation. This is a form of, this is vegetation that is over there. And we can start to have a shorter timeframe for a notice. And it would start off by. It's going to have the, the regular preamble. On how it's the owner's responsibility or the occupant and or the applicant's responsibility. And how they have to never even do their run, but they have to do the portion that's the public right of way. So that plays off and supports the state law. And then having to follow rules, have to follow the ordinance. And then outlining what the unlawful growth is and, and for us, that's been eight inches or more. And then after that is when you get into the specifics. Of shortening it. So you have to forgive me. So it would, it would start off with every year the city publishing a notice in the general circulation. Within the city during the month of March. I put March in, it could be April, could be February, it depends on the rest of the flow of this, but for right now, we're going to say March. That long grass or weeds is defined earlier in the section. If it's not, if they're not destroyed by May first. Then or cut or likely destroyed. Then the city has the ability to go ahead and destroy them. For the provisions of the ordinance, it's just laying out. This is what you've got to do. You have to do it by a certain date. And we're going to put this in the paper. And then an owner, agent, occupant or person entity that has control. Or supposed to be maintaining if they fail after the publication of the notice. Then, excuse me, they're provided only one subsequent notice. They're given seven business days. And again, anytime where I've got a month in here or remember. All of this is open for discussion, but this is just a first blush suggestion. Seven business days after posting and receipt of notice failing to comply. It's a, it's a violation and the city goes through the process of ticketing in order to be able to set up the next step, which is. Getting access to the property. And that's the portion where it talks about city doing the work. So whether somebody doesn't do their stuff by May first. Or sometime. Throughout the, the season. This is letting that person know. The notice has gone out in the public. In the newspaper, you've gotten a first notice. You get a ticket and we're looking to court. It's that cut and dry and hopefully we'll get the support of court. But then the next section talks about. What the city will do and how it's going to recoup its costs, including. A percent for inspections and a potential lien on the property. Et cetera. And all this will have to dovetail properly into Article. Ten, that may be the, that might be chapter ten, section ten twenty-two. Which is the section that lays out the misdemeanors and fees associated with certain violations. So there is another small section that would have to be updated, but it, that's easily done. And then obviously a penalty and that's the. The levier collection of a special assessment or work done by the city. Et cetera. Before I go into the discussion with Washington County in a separate, do you want to have some discussion?
So there's, just to make sure I said, so there's. Proposed here, there'd be one general notice in the paper. And then there would be a complaint or somebody noticing violation and there would be an initial notice. With the seven business days and then after that, the violation.
And it could be seven business days, it could be just seven days, you could reduce it to five, I mean. You could make it ten like it is, we've just moved it from the public nuisance section. To one that is hopefully more. More responsive, that allows us as enforcement officers to move things along with her.
I can back just a single week, like not business days, just something. You know, earlier, I won't think it's a seven business days currently. The second A versus Wednesday to do work, it just says within seven days.
So they get, they get one posting on the door.
A posting on the door or if it'd be.
That says in seven days, we're coming to do this. Or if you have a penalty in seven days.
You're getting your ticket so that we can get court action. Effectively, that's what all that means. I, we cannot, even if we put it in the ordinance, I cannot go on somebody's property without a court.
I don't know.
This language.
Are you sure?
That's my understanding. I can double check all of this to be sure, but that's my understanding. Whether it's grass cutting, whether it's removing the stuff like we did on the Dover Street property a few years back.
It might be difference, difference.
I will double check that.
In terms of the week, unless you're old, you might need that. We get a bit time to get somebody else to do it for you. So I'm not sure, Jamie, that. Shortening it, Jamie, is the best idea. And I only say that because now I'm super old and I can't do stuff.
I guess ten days would be worth how that we slow me down.
Then I'm not doing it. And I have to put somebody, I'm at somebody else's mercy. It's all for me.
Ten days. We say ten days, seven business days, ten days to kind of roll through the same, is it a one-day difference?
Where I was going though is, is after the first time. Where you give the notice and the seven days goes by. Well, well, no, the way this reads is the next time it's observed to be long. We just go cut, we just go cut it. That's why I think you don't have to go back to court every time, because if this occurred every, every time, you'd be. Spending as much time in court as you would be cutting it. And I don't think that's the intent of.
I will double check that to be sure. My understanding is that you're going to court at a time unless. Unless you're asking for a stipulation in a first order. That if it, because of habitual violation. Be one court order giving you that to the rest. But I would double check.
So. So you go to court and then you cut their grass.
If the court grants the order. The ticket gives us the ability to request. A hearing in front of a judge. If the property owner does not contest. We should get the, we should get the approval of the order. If the property owner contests, then we have to make the case and.
So, and in terms of cost.
So in terms of cost, I can only go by, I can explain what we've done in the past when we had to. Clean garbage and jump from somebody's driveway. Once we got the court order, we then had to post and. Post for bids and take in and go through a process where the council approved which bid it wanted to take generally. Once we have that, then we are able to. To. Let them know that this is when you're going to do it, but we have to also give that property owner notice that. This is the date we're coming into your property and it can't just be twenty-four hours. The due diligence period is.
But question or the thought that is going through my mind is like, what prevents somebody of taking advantage that the city becomes the entity to hold their lawn?
The cost? The cost.
It'd be enough that.
It's going to be, it's not DPW or not having DPW, they don't have the time and. It could be something like that. So that's why we hired the house.
Cost the potential fifteen percent.
Having done a lot of quote enforcement, I'm generally a big fan of shorter periods. For everything. I've, I've heard a lot of police where they give one notice and then wait about two weeks and then send a second notice. And then a month is gone and you have two or three weeks before you're scheduled to court. Now, or the year's gone and there's still a problem. My experience has been if folks don't get you a first notice, you're not going to.
Yes.
And. The key is to allow that weekend for folks. My experience administering it is. If they say I, I broke my hip, my grandkid's going to come on Wednesday. It's three days passive, then almost every single quote enforcement officer is like, okay, that's fine. That's, that's part of the administration. So I mean, they're. They're short of time. As reasonable, seven days, seven calendar days, and that was a weekend, and then the ministry, we, we have that flexibility. Let's see. Things I can short it, I, I like it, it's fashioned that we can do that. It's a more fraction to get from the start. When you get, there's something magical about that little piece of carbon paper that people pay attention more quickly. What's, how long is the Chelsea court schedule now? Three weeks or so.
Since I haven't had to do it in quite a while, I don't know that. But I would suspect. Previously, it was always, it was two to three weeks.
If there are ways that we can. On this, I know the international property management code allows for processes that don't require court. But it has kind of fairly robust internal administration costs. They have to set up a panel and make a deal and all that stuff. So that's an option. One of the things we can do for costs is at the beginning of the year, we put out a bid. How much is going to cost you per hour to do this? So we don't have to bid at every project until we get. And, and that plus the fifteen percent. People aren't going to want to pay that fifteen percent. Are we able to add this as a property tax if they don't pay?
I would make sure that the language, you know, to the city attorney and with money, say no, there has, there has to be that very specific.
Thing I don't like about the lane is that that doesn't happen to a profit source.
Right, right. You want to be able to do it at the end of the year when you do that other. Sorry for not knowing the specific term, but when you put taxes up.
That's all we got.
Sean, I think the city is, they're one, it's almost exactly what you have it.
I'll check them out.
Or might be a reference.
Oh, I have one last thing I've got. I'd be interested in seeing whether or not the which is appropriate. That's awfully already, maybe something closer to six, who are.
I noticed that different communities range. I think the smallest I saw was five. And I think the greatest I saw was ten. I saw some that. Kind of were a little squirrely, so it's. I can, I can check out your work.
I think it's definitely right direction, Sean. What?
Question about this part that says. You know. Add a subsequent violation that. That it's just going to be without necessity of any additional further notice. I mean. Where do you start the clock on that?
So you're going to have the notice in the paper.
Yeah, but I mean, like if they've had the notice, if they've gotten the, if they've gotten tickets, they've told us. When does the city decide to go and go get?
If, if, if this hasn't been a chronic person, but you've talked about it. And. I would have to send a new notice. I couldn't just automatically go on the property just because they violated it. They would still get.
I guess that's the way that I was reading that and maybe I'm going to get wrong.
And I'll double check to make sure I'm that.
Okay, because I was just, I was just thinking like, is somebody going around?
No, that's the way it reads. That's where I was going. It's the second time. Where it's going.
Yeah, and so is somebody going around from the city measuring the grass and, or is it like the, what if. What it's like not at eight inches, does the city just go over, you know, that's a little brave for me.
So. I don't get out there with a measuring stick or ruler and measure eight inches. I can pretty much from the visual determine. And most of the time, nine times out of ten. When we go out and we look, it's because there's been a complaint. This year. We proactively did it, but we did it closer to the. Middleton end of May because of the whole. Long May, we did not.
You did it two weeks after I broke my ankle.
We, the city did not adopt that policy. But there was a lot of confusion out there and a number of, remember, we, we issued. Somewhere between thirty and fifty notices in three separate runs. Some of those were, I think, two or three of those were duplicates. The rest of them have all addressed the issue. They either addressed it and it crossed in the mail, they addressed it immediately after. Lots of different calls, not very happy that they got a notice. Other calls that they thought they could do non-long May, Washington County. It was all over the news, Ann Arbor. It's. We tried to be cognizant of that, but getting closer to the end of the month. As I'm driving down Ann Arbor Street coming into town, those lawns were looking pretty bad and they were looking. It was that way throughout the city. And so this was one of the first times we proactively went out and started to look at the lawns. And send up the letters and then. And then it just was that perfect storm of people then also calling and complaining and it coming up again as well. If, if this was an unusual year and.
I'm not, sorry, just, I'm not against it. I just.
Yeah, I will make sure about the, the second time issue.
I agree. I would personally like to see us put a notice each time, give them a chance that they come in seven days. As opposed to just throwing it and doing it.
Yeah, because that's, I mean, I also think, and I don't know, maybe this is. Growing up in the country, but like I think that opens us up to some, this dangerous situations.
I think there's some kindness involved in what you're saying, Sean, that we rely on in this community and have for us every years.
Well, there's, there's the whole legal secret process. You have to let someone know that that's what you're going.
Right.
Of course it. And the process. Enforcing it. And the process thing, if it does go to court for the first time. A clever community will have an order pre-written for the judge to sign. And include language. If there is another violation within the scrolling season, we'll post notice if you've got. One day, two day, three days, and they're allowed to go back on it.
We have, we have done the heavy word in place previously, so not necessarily grass cutting, but for some of the other. So would you like me to bring something back to you at your next meeting? For consideration for. I know you do need public period of change amendment. Would it be, would it be?
By the time we change it, the grass will stop growing.
Actually, it would be nice to see similar process for snow. Because there are a lot of the defenders that are awful.
I'll look at snow removal and see what tweaks they need to even.
I did the answer. Yeah, bring it back as soon as you can. One of the next steps.
Okay. All right, now. The second thing, and this goes more in line with the lines of. Following up on the rental inspection and property maintenance codes. So. PA two forty-five of nineteen ninety-nine was amended and renamed the state construction code. It was renamed. To the, the still the roast ale. Single state construction act. That was done back in nineteen seventy-two. I've got this right. The, obviously that was way before my time even being a planner. I was still in. So, according to the analysis on the legislature's website. The purpose behind this amendment was to provide statewide application of the act and of the state construction code. The intent was to require statewide application of the code and prevent local governments from making modifications to the building code. That they felt were important for them, but which often resulted in a hodgepodge of construction codes that varied from community to community. And that was a, that was an issue for builders and developers. Way back then, still is, just don't complain, but yeah, one thing at a time. So. Pursuant to the act, Washtenaw County elected to continue. The responsibility for administration and enforcement of the act. And the code on behalf of each of the governments that are within Washtenaw County. They didn't submit a notice of intent to administer or continue to administer it themselves within their own boundaries. The city of Dexter has not ever submitted a notice. We've always utilized the county. And so therefore, the authority regarding enforcement of the building code is vested with Washtenaw County and we have. We have a code in our ordinance or a. Provision within our ordinance that recognizes Washtenaw County as our building department. Our relationship with Washtenaw Building Department is strong. I'm fairly impressed and, and treasure the communication that, that I have, my office has. With the building department. Doesn't seem we haven't had our hiccups in the, the eight years that I've been here. But we've always been able to overcome them and, and get them resolved. So I met with the head of the building department, Jeff Schmidt, and the lead building official, Lance Mitchell. On the seventh to discuss the codes, property maintenance codes and rental inspections that the city's considering. At our meeting, I did learn that the county has adapted not only the state construction code. But the twenty fifteen international property code and, excuse me, they can administer both for the city. If the city. Decides to create a rental inspection ordinance. We can either do it and set up all the mechanisms that go along with that. Or we can have the building department do it. They've already got a structure in place. They'd obviously have to hire an inspector. They'd have to probably have an additional administrative staff person, but they can do it. That doesn't add any cost to us. That's, that's, in my opinion, that like, I exhaled that and then it said, okay, that. Didn't know that. That was good to know. And the fact that they had no problem. You know, they didn't look at that as, oh my God, this is another thing we have to do. It's just, okay, that's the hardest thing would you do? Plus, I, there's one other township that they currently administer. Sorry, I can't remember which one it was. That is also looking at a rental inspection. So we would not be the only one if this is something we behold. We are not required to specify Washtenaw County and its building official as an enforcing agency. Even except when it comes to floodplain management. That's another thing. Some of you on council might remember that. Donna, you might, because we had to adopt a specific code as it comes, as it pertains to floodplain. But the director did ask that if that's something that we, that we want to do, that, that. We, we specifically establish building. Property maintenance and rental inspection, if they're our designated agent. I think if, if I understood her point, it will make it much easier for them if they were to have to go to court. So she is going to be sending me the twenty fifteen property maintenance code. She suggested looking at the Pittsfield Township rental inspection ordinance, even though Washtenaw County does not administer that. She felt that it was a good solid code to, to look at and possibly massage to work for us. But there are still, we still have to go through a really deep evaluation of our current general code. As it pertains to the. To anything dealing with property maintenance, building inspections, et cetera. Excuse me. So that when we're looking at the property maintenance code. We're adapting those sections of it that are. Applicable to us, that we, we want or need in force. I'm remembering what Mike said when he was talking to Steve Estes, is instead of adapting the entire code. Which you may not. There may be things you don't want to have to enforce that you look at those things that you do. So that's where the evaluation came from. And. But what I'd like to do is be able to really take the deep dive and evaluate what's in the property maintenance code. Start to look at what our code is and then be able to come back to you with some suggestions, but do it. As near as I can, digestible, bite-sized pieces. So this isn't just a big. One big dump on you and you have to try and keep it.
If, if they're already doing this, it's already doing rental housing inspection and some else.
They aren't, but they have no problem starting.
They, they say they have. The community is looking at potentially.
Sorry.
I just said they didn't invite you to have a checklist. They already like to look back to the safety issues.
And I can check to see other communities that actually do rental inspection if they have those and. Pretty sure you're probably.
This is a lot of good information. Does council have any questions from Sean or? You probably need a couple of minutes to pull that together and get back to us, or?
Just saying, there is a lot in the international property management. Best to do strategic touches to blanket, because then people ask, why are we enforcing this thing and that and this thing? It's relatively easy, or should be relatively easy for the kind of building department to have folks, because it doesn't require a building inspector license. It's a little bit lower threshold. For future discussions, talking with them. One of the things that I would propose is that if we're going to designate them officially as our entity, that we do it in a way that's not too painful to change. So. Something like the ordinance says council designates the building authority for this instance by resolution. So we don't have to be through a public hearing and through some reason they say we're not doing it anymore. Or say our official is the county, but we do other people by resolution, something like that. So it gives us that flexibility.
It's quite a test to get that IPFC certification. It's not easy.
No, but the, but the rental inspection thing is, you can walk up the street.
Yeah, well, you have to be, you have to do it under the purview of those licensed building officials. Thank you for your research on that and bringing that forward.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback and I'll come back in a few days.
All right, I'll just jump down to, we go to item ten that we added, which I had as consideration of setting a public hearing for a variety of guys. Industrial facility tax exemption. For August eighth, was it?
Is your August meeting in a good, that's the eight, yes.
Motion by Fisher. So in the special, this was in the blue. Additional information.
The blue for some people. Oh, we, we ran out of blue. Our way through, so.
That's exciting. Any questions that are involved here?
Did that scream the man? So blue or pink?
This panel, please, tell the vote to select board of hands for August eight. Yes.
Yes. Griffin? Fisher? Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
All right, yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We are down to council comments. Wow, still. Get this off.
Oh, welcome. I hope that you got something out of this. Look for help with you and it's not always this long and I don't always throw it. I've never done that before.
Yeah, she has to go first, but.
Yeah, well, also I am, I was actually a random thing, so get used to that. It's okay. I think we all like.
So now?
Um, I'm just going to say that I'm excited to see that the topic of ADA in general has been part of our discussion for a variety of things in the last few times. It's, it's a topic that is. Near to my heart and it's also very much needed to be discussed.
I can tell you that the step going up to the zeeble is one inch higher than all the rest of the steps. Not cool. And. I didn't realize it until I went to the water vegan.
Oh, Jesus.
You went really, too, didn't you?
Yeah, I should have a reason to. And I did remember when I was talking about the, the very black spaces where you can sit down here. Particularly in the apartment. Easy to walk for a while and then have to sit down and there's no place to sit down. We come over.
Yeah, welcome, Ron. It seemed nice to have you here. Hope it's a good year for you.
I have a question I forgot for Mr. Stewart. The fountain in the park next to the flag, is that broken or shut off or open?
It's been shut off since COVID.
Okay, so. Yes, I had a question for folks and, and since we talked about the Biden stuff, we have two prominent realtors in town that are very dogs. So maybe give them a call. They can throw money towards the fountain. They'll be happy that you have their shirts and whatever. Just want to say my, my vote against the charter amendment was because I don't think it goes as far as, I think a lot too, I understand it's a luxury vote. Closer, I would say, for it. I will introduce you one last bit of tree knowledge. It's called the rule of eighty-six. If you want to find out how many gallons of sap you need to make a gallon of maple syrup, you divide eighty-six by the sugar content. So, and it varies greatly during the, the sugar run. One last thing and more serious than the maple syrup, although that's a big, big deal in Canada, is. We've been talking about the cost of homeowners for, for mileage paid for fire station. There's also benefits. So a couple, maybe a month and a half, two months ago, Mr. Smith and I got into. We, we had disagreement about our fire rating versus Chelsea area fire authority. And we were both right. So we have the same rating except for Chelsea has rating better than us if you're within a thousand feet of fire higher. Which all of the city of Dexter is hydrated. So you're always within a thousand feet of hydrant, which means you're in a lower fire protection level, a better lower fire protection, which means you pay less insurance. So I. I encourage folks to call your homeowner's insurance and say, if we were in one better insurance. Level for fire, what would that affect our, our payment? I've done it. They told us it would be around ten dollars a month. That we would save. I can tell you my experience speaking with Penn, when they built their fire station and they dropped down similarly. There was one business in their industrial park that saved twenty-seven thousand dollars a year on our insurance. Now, that's a bit rare. It's a very heavy industrial thing, but go out there, do your research. There are benefits that offset some of the costs. That's all.
Thank you, Zach. Jane? And we give you the last word.
Well, I think it's been great for speed. I'm really excited, excited to be here and get to know you all. I thank you a lot for this opportunity.
Welcome. Thanks for being here. Okay, we're back around a non-range participation. I'll start with the audience here. Anyone want to say anything on the non-range? Todd's still here? Todd, would you like to say any closing remarks?
Um, nothing in particular. I'm, I'm grateful and excited that others on council are interested in the subject of ADA compliances I am. It's really nice to hear.
Thanks for participating this evening.
Not at all.
Item P, which is looking for a gentleman. Move by, so now. Second by one, all in favor, say hi, please. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.